If we can go and do roll call, please.
Yes, Dan Foyle.
Here.
Ken Sanderson.
Here.
Kelly Rast.
Present.
Fred Wingert.
Here.
Rod Richardson. And Ken Klingensmith.
Present.
Thank you. We do have a quorum.
Thank you. Can you do the statement for hybrid in-person virtual meeting, please?
Yes.
For the record.
This meeting is now being recorded in the board hearing room with zoning board members attending in person. There is also an option for virtual attendance on Zoom webinar. For Zoom participants wishing to speak, please use the raise hand function in the Zoom app at the start of the agenda item on which you desire to comment. Comments will be received from in-person attendees first, followed by Zoom participants. When it is your turn to speak, the moderator will recognize you by the name or phone number used to join the Zoom webinar, and your microphone will be unmuted. Please state your name and the city and state where you reside for the record, followed by your comments. All public speakers will be limited to three minutes unless designated, unless the chair designates a different time period. If you have trouble with Zoom, please call 913-715-9666. Board members, staff, and presenters, please state your name every time you begin talking, and please speak into the microphone so that the people attending via Zoom can hear you and your comments can be transcribed for the record. This is a public meeting. We are presenting live and recording the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving forward, is there any changes to the agenda? It looks like we have four items before the board this evening. Any changes recommended by the board? If so, if not, can we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any board disclosures of conflicts of interest or external contacts related to the four applicants before us? Hearing none, we'll move to approving of the minutes. We have two groups of minutes to review. One is the January 3rd meeting, and then the second is the January 31st meeting.
Kelly Rast, I make a motion to approve the minutes from January 3rd, 2024.
Fred Winger, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Kelly Rast, make a motion to approve the minutes from January 31st, 2024.
Fred Winger, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Sean, any update on Board of County Commissioners' actions or Planning Commission actions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Sean Pendley, planning staff. Two items to note for Board of County Commissioners' actions. As you may recall, there was an application that was considered at that January 3rd meeting for the zoning board, recommended for approval of the conditional use permit for Advanced Baseball Academy. That application was approved by the Board of County Commissioners on February 1st, with revised stipulations, including a five-year term. There was also an application that was on for the January 31st East Zoning Board meeting that was recommended for approval for the MetCaf soccer application. That application is scheduled for final action at the Board of County Commissioners for the meeting tomorrow, March 7th, at 9:30 a.m. For Planning Commission and Zoning Board, actually, Planning Commission updates. The only item to note is that we had a training session, as you recall, February 27th. It was a meeting for Planning Commission and Zoning Board members, a training session to go over updates for process, for planning applications, and just to provide information for comprehensive plans, zoning and subdivision regulations. I think it was a beneficial training. We really appreciate the board members for attending that meeting. Hopefully, it was of help to you. We also do have Planning Commission meeting scheduled for March 26th. Happy to answer. Any questions?
Any questions of the board?
That is correct. I think the zoning board recommended three-year term, and the applicant requested tenure. The board approved a five-year term.
Any other questions?
Sorry, Steve. Whoever spoke last, I couldn't hear whatever they said. I could hear Sean, but I couldn't hear whoever asked the question, whatever.
I asked Sean to confirm that the Advanced Baseball conditional use permit was approved with a five-year term, and it was.
Thanks, sir.
Perfect. All right, moving forward, business before the board. Karen's going to present application number E23368REZOX on 16165 Kenneth Road. Karen?
Thank you. Karen Miller with the Johnson County Planning Department. And this application is basically a request to go from multifamily zoning to single-family zoning, and we refer to that as a downzoning. That's kind of our shorthand for that. And so first I'll give some slides showing the general area, and then I'll go over the two ways in which we review this request. First, we'll look at the infrastructure requirements required for the requested RN2 zoning, and then we'll look at the golden criteria, analyzing the land use surrounding it. So here is the applicant's property with the red star. It's surrounded by developed property at more of an urban level, single-family zoning district. And I'll zoom in more and a little bit more. Here's the applicant's property. It's four acres, and within this four-acre parcel, there are two lots that are grandfathered in. And right now, the applicant's single-family dwelling is located on the northern two-and-a-half acres, and there's a vacant two-acre lot on the southern portion. And so just to note, this area, the applicant's four-and-a-half-acre parcel and the River Ridge Farms Common Area to the north, and also this natural gas transfer terminal to the north. All of these three parcels have multifamily zoning. That's PRU4, Planned Residential Urban Apartment District. This zoning came in in 1994 with the county-wide rezoning, when the county went from their 1992 zoning regulations to their 1994. So that was a mass rezoning. This particular pocket of multifamily zoning wasn't examined by a specific rezoning request for a specific parcel like we're considering today. And so the first way we will review this request is through infrastructure. And there are sewers available. The property is currently working with the wastewater department to get sewers extended to both the southern two-acre parcel and then the northern two-and-a-half-acre parcel. There's currently plenty of water available. There's fire hydrants at the north and generally at the south ends of the property. So there's plenty of water and wastewater service available. And then also, there's a certain advantage to going from the multifamily zoning to the single-family residential zoning. The multifamily zoning would require a local street, a cul-de-sac, to be built within this property to serve the apartment complexes, the apartment buildings that would be allowed by that zoning district. So right now, we have two grandfathered parcels, the two-and-a-half and the two-acre parcel. And there would only be, if this request is approved, one more single-family entrance onto Kenneth instead of a cul-de-sac. Then that is, that's it for the infrastructure. So all of the infrastructure elements required to rezone to the RN2 zoning district have been met. There's no waivers required. And then the other thing is going on to the review of the land use. Is this single-family zoning district appropriate for the area? And so interestingly, this PRU4 zoning, here's the pocket of zoning that we're considering. The reason we have to go through this rezoning to achieve the property owner's goal of one more single-family residence is that the single-family dwellings are not allowed in the multifamily zoning district. So there is the parcel available, the two-acre parcel available, to put a single-family home on, but the underlying multifamily zoning district doesn't allow it. So that's why we're going through this. And so that's why we'll kind of look at the land uses and see if indeed we think that that particular zoning district is appropriate. And so on page 12 of the staff report, we give the reasons why we think that this land use is appropriate. And this is based on the review of the application with request with respect to the golden criteria. And this is a summary of the whole analysis. So the first reason would be is the proposed zoning more closely matches how the subject property is being used, since it's being used as single-family, and is consistent with the predominantly single-family zoning and single-family residential uses of the nearby properties. And as we can see from the zoning district, is basically a sea of single-family zoning and uses surrounding this property. The reason number two is the proposed zoning to allow one additional single-family dwelling to be constructed on the four-plus-acre property. For a total of two single-family dwellings is compatible with the surrounding residential character of the neighborhood. Reason number three is the existing screening and buffering combined with the addition of only one new single-family dwelling mitigates the extent of detrimental effects to nearby properties. And reason number four is changing the zoning to a single-family zoning like the RN2 district requested, though lower in density than recommended by the Blue Valley Area Plan is more in keeping with the intended land uses and contemplated by the comprehensive plan. So that's kind of just the summary of the reasons to go through. And just to general, you know, glance, it really does make sense. If you look at this zoning map, here's multifamily zoning, and here is this whole, you know, over 200 acres of single-family zoning. And also, if you look at just the whole area, all of this is single-family zoning and uses. And with that, I'll just reference the proposed motion and the recommendation. Planning staff recommends approval of the requested zoning from PRU4 Planned Residential Urban Apartment District to RN2 Residential Neighborhood 2 District as recommended by staff and for the reasons set forth in the staff report. With that, I'll take questions.
Thank you, Karen. I appreciate that. That was very thorough. Any questions from the zoning board of staff?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Kelly Rast, this is more of a curiosity question. So prior, it just seems weird that that one little, prior in 1994, did they do the surrounding area as PRU4 or just that one four-acre?
I think it's that, just that little pocket. I looked at the 1982 zoning map, and it was, that pocket was actually the highest intensity commercial. Yeah, so from 1992 to 1994, somewhere it became commercial. And then in 1994, it was, you know, kind of downgraded from commercial to multifamily residential. And so right now, the existing house was built in 1950. So that house right now is legal non-conforming. It's grandfathered in. But just this new lot, well, not new lot, this grandfathered-in lot, it has to be rezoned.
It's always just been an oddity. Oh, yes. Thank you. Just curious.
I know. It is curious.
That was my question as well.
Oh, sorry.
So this is for a rezoning only. So will they then have to come back with a plat for the two lots and do a layout, or is that not necessary?
The two lots exist. They're also grandfathered in. And the reason you don't see the lot line is because the same owner owns both lots, and they receive the same tax bill. So that they're combined in terms of the tax bill. That's why you don't see the line.
Thank you. Any other questions? Perfect. Thank you, Karen.
And also, the applicant is here and is available to answer questions if you have any.
The applicant like to say a few words? Yeah, please. Please.
My name is Michael Waddams. I live at 16165 Kenneth Road, Stillwell, Kansas. And I am the applicant for the rezoning proposal. And I'm here really in the event there were any questions or other items that maybe I could address. But this report states it, and appreciate the board taking a look at this for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant? All right, hearing none. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment on this?
Yes, we have a Mike Lane signed up to speak.
Perfect. Mr. Lane, please.
First, I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity to come address you, and thank you for keeping our county looking good. My name is Mike Lane. I live at 2066 West 162nd Terrace in Stillwell. I'm here as behalf of the community that surrounds this parcel. I'm on the homeowners board, and I've been on the board for probably 12 years now. And when the notice letters came out to the neighborhood proposing this zoning change, there was a lot of discussion in the neighborhood. And the residents asked the board members to come speak in behalf of approval for this. We have 308 homes, all single homes, that completely surround this property. Our community pools on one side, we have a green space on the other, and we literally surround this parcel. And we think it'd be in the best interest of the neighborhood and the county to bring that down to single-home reservations and build some houses that continue on with the residential spread rather than, you know, pocket it up like it is now. So I can speak for pretty much the whole neighborhood, and everybody's in approval of this and very much hope that you guys will grant approval so we can go ahead and put some single homes there. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else signed up to speak on this topic?
No.
Perfect. With that, we'll go ahead and close our public comments. Any other further questions of staff or the applicant? This is Ken. I'm personally in favor of this. I think it makes sense. It seems pretty straightforward.
Agree.
All right, do we have a motion?
Kelly Rast, I'll propose the motion. I move that the board approve application number SE23368-REZ, requesting a rezoning from PRU4 Planned Residential Urban Apartment District to RN2 Residential Neighborhood 2 District as recommended by staff and for the reasons set forth in the staff report.
Fred Winger, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hearing none, that's the unanimous pass. When will this go, before the county commissioners?
This will appear before the Board of County Commissioners April 4th, 2024, at 9:30 in the morning in the board hearing room, which is 111 South Cherry Street, and it's this week. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, moving on to the next application before us. Diane's going to present application number E23346FPAU, the final plat for 201st Street and Mission Road. Diane?
Good evening. Diane Wicklund at Johnson County Planning Department. So the application here on this one, the applicant is Paint and Brockway Engineering, and the landowner is MK Realty LLC. As you can see here on the vicinity map, the property is located just one-half miles south of 199th Street on the west side of Mission Road. And the property size is about 68 acres. So the applicant is requesting approval of the final plat for the purpose of creating a 25-watt residential subdivision to be known as Blue Valley Reserves. And as I just showed you the location there, just south of 199th Street. So the rezoning to PRN2, the Planned Residential Neighborhood 2 District, and the preliminary plat were approved by the Board of County Commissioners on October 13th, 2022. So the proposed final plat is identical to the approved preliminary plat. The lots range in size from 2.5 to 2.8 acres. The plat does show a new public street to serve the subdivision. And I'll show here in a minute, the applicant also submitted a landscape buffer plan showing a landscape easement there along Mission Road and two proposed signs, one on the north side of the new street and one on the south side of the street. Easements are also shown on the final plat for stormwater facilities and the landscape buffer and the two monument signs. These facilities and amenities will be maintained by the homeowners association. In addition, an offsite improvement will occur to improve the existing Mission Road culvert that's located downstream. And that was part of the approval and outlined in the final stormwater management report. And then just also to note that the minimum infrastructure requirements were reviewed at the time of that preliminary plat and rezoning application. And so with the recommended stipulations, the final plat does comply with the minimum infrastructure requirements. And I can just go through here. Try that. So here's just an aerial view of the subject property. And then this one is just kind of showing the surrounding neighborhood. Sorry, I'm not sure how to get this zoomed in. It's not. Yeah. Yeah, thank you. That'll help. Couldn't figure out how to move the little box. So this is just the aerial showing the surrounding area, the property is outlined in blue. So it might look a little familiar to you. And then this is the approved preliminary plat that was approved along with the rezoning. And then this is the final plat that's been reviewed and is submitted as part of this application. Here is the landscape buffer plan, just kind of showing some landscaping and screening along Mission Road. And then over here to the side, here is just the picture graphic of what the monument signs will look like. And they'll, as I mentioned earlier, there's two monument signs, one on this north side and then one on the south side. So really with that, you'll also see a Public Works memo in the back of the staff report. And really no issues with that. The stormwater study's been approved. And so with that, planning staff is recommending approval of the final plat for Blue Valley Reserve, subject to those stipulations on pages eight and nine. And then you probably have a handout here at your desk that shows. So with this one, the applicant is requesting to revise just a couple of stipulations. So stipulation seven and eight, they just are requesting to take out and delete that language where it says prior to recording the final plat for those two stipulations. And staff is fine with that change, with that amendment. And then number 10 is just changing the department name that they record the plat with to Treasury Taxation and Vehicles. And then when the board is ready, there's a revised motion that's a little bit different than the one in your packet. So with that, I think I'll stop. If you have any questions, I can answer those. And then the applicant and engineer are also here.
Thank you, Diane. Is the final development plan review, those are original stipulations from the preliminary plat that are represented on pages five through eight. And then the recommendation, the additional 15, are those 15 additional stipulations with the final plat? Is that the correct interpretation?
That's correct. So the stipulations that are for this application for the final plat, those start on page eight and nine of the staff report. That's correct.
And that incorporates both the new comments from Public Works memo in that as well?
Yes, yes.
I saw the one. I didn't see the other, but I can check that. All right, thank you. Any other questions of staff from the board? Hearing none, we can go ahead. Thank you, Diane. Hearing none, we can move forward for any comments or presentation from the applicant? All right. Anybody here to speak publicly on this?
No.
All right, so we'll go ahead and open and close the public comment section. Discussion among the board.
Kelly Rast, if I'm remembering correctly, it's gone through a lot of changes and revisions or whatever. So I think they, everybody, to make everybody happy, and there's been a lot of work towards it. So it sounds like everybody's happy with it and looks straightforward and good.
I agree. This is Ken. This seems, and Diane, you had commented, this is the same as the preliminary plat. We have the additional recommendations or stipulations that are added to that, which seem consistent with the work that was done. Other than that, there pretty much nothing's changed.
That's correct. Yep, yeah. You know, really, at this point, the only kind of remaining thing was that they had to kind of do a final stormwater study, and they had done that, and that has been reviewed and accepted by Public Works.
And what's the extension that they have to do along Mission with the gravel off the side of the roads on Mission? Is that just right around the entrance?
I believe so. So I can maybe have their engineer come up and speak to that. They could probably give better detail and more accurate than I can.
Specifically, it's kind of referencing the comment about the culvert crossing, the yeah, the culvert crossing. It seemed like there was some gravel and work that has to be done on Mission Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. I'm Mark Huggins with Paint and Brockway. In order to bring the street up to standard, the county is going to have us put a four-foot gravel shoulder on our side adjacent to our property. Now, the other issue with the culvert is that the culvert that we drain to that passes under Mission Road won't carry a 50-year storm without overtopping, which is the arterial design standard. So by adding a second pipe at that location, we meet that requirement.
Thank you. I understand. This is Fred Winger. As I recall, there was a lot of discussion previously about the stormwater, and the neighbors were quite concerned. Can you kind of explain what the additional study that you guys did? And was that to address some of those concerns?
Yeah, it was essentially to do a more intensive study like you would in a floodplain analysis, which isn't normal on a residential subdivision. I've been doing this about 35 years and never done anything like this before. I've been doing this about thirty-five years and never done anything like this before. But essentially, we did the analysis clear through the downstream subdivision down to one hundred ninety-ninth street and including the culvert under one hundred ninety-ninth street to show that, you know, all those existing houses would be, meet the criteria for residential subdivisions for stormwater.
Fred Winger again. So the drainage does go, you're saying the drainage does go through the existing neighborhood, but you guys tested all that out with the additional stormwater analysis that you did?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Rod Richardson, I just had a question. I didn't see any indication that there would be any street lighting on this. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's, the county doesn't require that.
Right. I just, I was just asking if there was, and if there was, I was curious as to what kind it would be. So, thank you.
Any other discussion?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, based on the information we had before us and all the commentary, I would move that the board approve application number E twenty-three dash three forty-six dash FDP for a final development plan, which will serve as the final plat for a twenty-five lot residential subdivision to be known as Blue Valley Reserves, the reasons and stipulations recommended by staff and set forth in the staff report with revisions to stipulations number seven, eight, and ten, as noted by staff.
We have a second?
Yes, Anderson, I second it.
All in favor?
I.
Hearing no opposed, that's unanimously passed, and that'll go before the Board of County Commissioners on April fourth.
Yes, this will go to the Board of County Commissioners again, yes, on April fourth, nine thirty a.m., one eleven South Cherry here in this room.
Thank you. Moving on to our third application for this evening. Karen's going to provide an update on the conditional use permit, application number E two-three-three-six-two CUP. This was continued from the January third, twenty twenty-four meeting. And Karen, I'll let you go ahead and provide update. Thank you.
Thank you. So this is a conditional use permit request for a lawn and landscape business. And it's located on ten acres with RUR zoning. And I won't go over the staff report again. We went into that in quite detail at the last meeting. And I'll just cover the issues that were brought up. Both zoning board and neighbors, neighbors of three surrounding properties had had quite a few questions. And so the, the meeting was continued to allow the applicant and the neighbors to get together and to discuss the various issues. And that's exactly what happened. And then also, staff met with the applicant several times to go over, you know, just generally provide some guidance how to, to move forward and to address these issues that brought up. And so before I get into those issues, I'll just show a few slides regarding the surrounding area. Here is the applicant's property. It's a ten-acre property in a platted subdivision of ten-acre RUR lots. It's fronting onto Ridgeview Road. And you notice that the city of Spring Hill is adjacent to it, to the west. But then there's a large amount of, large parcels, eighty-acre, forty-acre, twenty-acre parcels. And then also, here's also a little node of, this is some RLD zoning and then smaller, older parcels. here's just a parcel map, so you can, you can see how the, the area is divided. So large eighty-acre parcels, ten-acre parcels, some twenty, and some forty-acre parcels. So there's, there's quite a bit of open space in the area, quite a bit of agriculture, kind of more to the north and to the, to the east. And then there's this node of, of more urban development behind. Then also, here's, here's the property. Here's the location of the proposed yard. It'll be a hundred and twenty by hundred and twenty gravel yard. That is, it's about seven hundred feet from the city of Spring Hill boundary. It's about a hundred and sixty feet from the, the neighbor to the south, fifty feet to the neighbor to the north, and about four hundred feet from the Ridgeview Road. And then here's the site plan, and I'll leave this up. The north is to your left. I do have a full-size site plan that I can bring up if, if need be. And then, then also, I have a proposed motion if anybody needs that. So now I'll just hit on the, first, the zoning board concerns. Those are put forth in the, the memo from staff dated February twenty-eighth. And then as an attachment to the memo is also the original staff report dated December, December twenty-seventh. And also attached to this is a revised written narrative submitted by the applicant and also a summary of the meeting and the, and the requests from the surrounding property owners. So some of the zoning board concerns addressed would be the idea of expansion of business uses in the area. And the, the applicant and the owners talked a little bit more about that. And, and they hit upon, you know, kind of the, the whole essence of the CUP and, and why staff recommended approval of the CUP. And that is that this is a small-scale, family-run business. It's, it's very low intensity compared to more intense, larger commercial operations. So there's a difference between this type of business, this family business where the person lives on the property, as opposed to some of those larger, more intense businesses. And I addressed that idea in the, the proposed reasons for recommendation. And the reason that I put it in the reasons for recommendation of approval is the way that CUPs are adopted. So the Board of County Commissioners adopts conditional use permits with a resolution for approval. And in that resolution for approval, the reasons for, for approval are listed. And so in, in the reasons for approval of this, number two, which is on page five of your memo, it'll read, "The subject property is located within a rural area with residential uses on large lots and agricultural uses. A small-scale, family-run landscape contractor business that is limited in nature, and it's limited by the stipulations that, that we're working on, will be compatible with the existing adjacent landscape contractor business and rural character of the area, whereas a more intense, larger commercial operation may not be compatible." So, so this was planning staff's way of addressing that issue that came up by the zoning board and by the surrounding property owners. Another issue that came up was height of the existing berm along the south and east property lines. It's my understanding that the applicant and that owner to the south, they, they met, they talked about the existing berm and, and the trees that were planned to, to be planted on that berm. And that property owner found it to be acceptable. And so I just kept the original stipulation regarding that berm and the trees planted on it. Also, storage of explosives and fuel was brought up by the zoning board. So there was a stipulation added prohibiting storage of explosives and a stipulation allowing fuel storage per building in fire code. And I talked with our building code official, and a building permit is allowed for fuel, is required for fuel storage, and that would be inspected yearly by our fire inspector. Then also stockpiling and or burning leaves and grass, tree limbs and other vegetative matter brought to the property from other sites. And this was, this was something that I spoke to a lot of people about. And there is a stipulation recommended in cooperation with the environmental staff prohibiting open burning. And that is in accordance with Kansas Air Quality Regulations twenty-eight dash nineteen dash six forty-five, open burning prohibited. So Kansas statute, it, it starts out by prohibiting all open burning, and then they give exceptions, specific exceptions to that. For instance, if you own a home and you want to burn some leaves or limbs from your property, it's okay, it's a residential use, you can do that burning. If you're, for instance, a developer clearing some land, you can, you can burn that land to clear. If you're burning like a field to, for, you know, like to rejuvenate the land, that, that's an exception. Now, that's accepted. Exceptions can be requested, but the way those exceptions are reviewed is that it has to be found that the, the particular burning request is necessary and, and impractical otherwise. There's no other practical method in, in order to dispose of whatever limbs that you have. And then the other is that it has to be in, upholds the public welfare, you know. And so I talked with environmental staff. Our environmental, our environmental staff is the state designee to enforce this, this Kansas statute. And so we, we, you know, were of the opinion that it probably didn't meet those two requirements to receive an exception. So I also talked with the fire district. And, you know, the fire district does require a burn permit anytime there is, is, you know, burning allowed. So in order to be able to burn limbs that have been brought from one site onto this property for this commercial use, there's three things that have to be satisfied. One is this conditional use permit has to allow it. Two is that there, it has to be allowed by that Kansas Air Quality Regulation. And then the third thing is a burn permit has to be received from the, the fire department. So, so, so staff is recommending the stipulation to, to not allow the burning. But in the event that the zoning board does want to allow burning, it would have to be, allow burning in accordance with this Kansas Air Quality Regulation and also upon receipt of a, a burn permit from the fire district. So those, so those three things have to be, have to be in place. So in, in terms of the zoning board concerns, that's how staff and that, that the applicant have addressed that. The neighbor concerns, the applicant met with the neighbors. And then after the meeting, I received a, a, a very good email, a copy of that email is attached from Charles Morse, who's representing that himself and to the two other property owners. And the, the recommended edits to the stipulations would be a three-year initial, initial term. And that's been put into the stipulations. A bathroom provided for employees with a porta potty under contract for servicing hidden out of a view from the road and, and the Sutton property, stipulation's been added to that effect. Limiting the number of trucks in regular use, a stipulation has been added limiting the number of trucks. Language is suggested to replace any of the trees that die, so a stipulation's been added for that. And then including language in the permit, which characterizes this is a small, family-run business and limited in nature. And so that's the, that's the change we already discussed to the reasons for recommendation. And so I, I've been, I've reviewed all of these changes with the applicant. The applicant is agreeable with the requests, though he does prefer a longer term. And then also, he does prefer the ability to, to pursue the, the permissions for burning. Those are the two things that, that he is, would be most interested in changing if possible. And with that, I'll take questions.
Thank you. I appreciate you going through the, the changes, the details. I want to commend the applicant for working with the neighbors and the staff. I think when you really sit down and look at it, this is sort of the ideal case of where the applicant, the neighbors, staff work together to kind of come up with a, a good resolution. And I think it goes with the spirit that we're trying not to turn things down, we're trying to make things work. And so this seems in, in that light and spirit. So thank you for that.
Thank you. And just, just one comment. This is, this is my understanding from all the parties. And so this is a good starting point. And if I've misunderstood anything from the applicant or the, the property owners, you know, this, this, this is my, my best shot.
And any, well, and I also appreciate the fact that they're characterizing it as a small, family-run business, because I had the same concerns about, does this kind of set the door and open it to be huge commercial properties? And so I'm glad to see both Charles and applicant discuss that as well, as that go into the stipulations. But any questions of staff? Karen, from anyone right now?
Rod Richardson, just curious, if this is approved, subject to these stipulations regarding the fall, small family-owned business? And it turns out that XYZ Inc. decides it's a wonderful spot for their landscaping business, et cetera, and they suddenly buy it from this applicant? Is that a violation of the CUP in some way? Or it would seem to be? So I'm, I'm trying to figure out, is this a stipulation, a limitation of use, or is it simply an observation that it's a small, family-owned business?
I was thinking that there is some reason why the applicant has to stay and live on the site. It's eluding me. And one thing that could be done is we could emulate our, our home occupation standards that are part of our regulations, has the requirement that the property owner live on the site. I was, I was considering addressing this situation with that stipulation. And, and you certainly could put that in, and that would be fine.
Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Richardson, Sean Pendley, planning staff, we, I think there was some discussion regarding that specific language regarding the family-run business, because we recognized that that was a comment from the zoning board and a concern from some of the neighbors. We had initially recommended that as a stipulation, and that may have been one of the neighbor requests as well. However, what we did at the time, when we finalized the staff report, we included that as a reason for approval. We did note, too, that the applicant indicated that, I think in the revised narrative. But we, we included that as a number two under the reasons for recommendation for approval on page five of the report. We noted it's a small-scale, family-run business. I don't think that that translates into a specific stipulation, but of course, that is what the applicant is intending, and that's what the intended use is. So I guess it'd be a good question for that, if in, in the future, if it were ever sold, if this property were sold, you know, that might be a good subject for discussion at the, a time of renewal for the CUP.
Karen?
Very well, thank you. Nope, that, that answers my question.
With the new rules related to conditional use permit renewals, is this one that in three years, if there's no complaints, no concerns, neighbors haven't filed grievances, that this would kind of auto-renew for him or for the applicant? Or is, would they go through a whole process again?
It'd be the full process.
Yes.
It'd be a public hearing and final approval by the Board of County Commissioners.
Correct. Yes, this would require a new public hearing, go through the whole public hearing process.
Okay, thank you.
This is Fred Winger. I appreciate all the work that was done between the staff and the applicant. The, and I appreciate the explanation about the burning. I read through that a few times before the meeting, and that was very helpful. I'm still a little confused, but the, the takeaway on the burning is there will be no burning of anything brought on the, on the of anything brought on the, on the property by what we're putting in there. Is that kind of a good summary?
Yes, as, as it's stipulated now.
Okay.
Yes.
I saw the memo from the, the landowners that were adjacent. That was late January, mid-January. Have they seen the final write-up? I saw what they wrote out, but are they, maybe their representative tonight?
They, the representative is here today and, and I, I know that, that they have seen it. I know that because I accidentally uploaded the staff report instead of the memo onto the agenda on the website and that the landowners drew that to my attention, but I have not, I have not received any comments either way. So, so like, so I just wanted to, to make sure that this is my, you know, my understanding. But the, the landowner is here and could speak today.
Thank you.
Ms. Kelly Rast, a clarification with the burning. So since, can he, if he, if he gets a burn permit, can he burn his own personal, like leaves and limbs just like anybody else? It only pertains to any stuff that's brought in from a job from the off-property site?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of Karen, if we let her?
Mr. Chairman, Rod Richardson, just a question to, to staff. In the reasons for a recommendation of approval, you indicate the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan. My question is kind of generic and that is, since this would not be authorized under the comprehensive plan other than by an approved conditional use permit, it's essentially a prohibited use absent special permission under the CUP. I'm curious as to, and I don't have an objection to it particularly, but I'm curious as to how you arrive at, on really any conditional use permit, how it could be consistent with the comprehensive plan if in fact, it's not otherwise permitted without a conditional use permit?
I'll tell you my thinking on it. So we let the city of Spring Hill know about the conditional use permit and we, we asked for comments and they, some of their comments included, please make sure that they don't use the step-out street to the, the west for their business, that's a stipulation. Please make sure that you look at the, the stormwater and make sure it doesn't drain towards the, the platted subdivision. We did that, it does not. And so, so the city of Spring Hill does not have any sort of heartburn over this use. They're, they're thinking that it's sufficiently far away, it's 700 feet from, from the first row of homes. And then also I looked at their future land use map and it, it, I forget the exact category, but it's basically rural is what they have for this. And so, so Spring Hill, the city of Spring Hill specifically does not have any heartburn over this actual use and then generically, you know, we're of the opinion that this use is consistent with that general rural area. It's a small family-owned business.
And I have no, my objection is, or not objection, my comment's generic, but I would observe for whatever it's worth, that if in the future, on any conditional use permit, the general sentiment is that the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan, would certainly put on the record for someone that would perhaps wish to rezone this property for this use to some other zoning category, it would be difficult at that point to say that's not, this use is not consistent with the comprehensive plan for zoning purposes. And I guess, forget this application, I'm just throwing out that it might be worth considering whether you take the position on any conditional use permit that it's not, not subject to the comprehensive plan. It's going to be an outlier use, but it's subject to approval as a conditional use permit, subject to whatever stipulations are ultimately approved on it. That would be my only concern if someone decided that this is such a great use, I don't want to do these CUPs anymore, I want to rezone it. And, and we say, well, it's not consistent with the comprehensive plan, then it's like, well, yes, it is, you said so right here. I don't need an answer, I'm just pointing that as a.
I'll, I'll mull that over.
Okay. And Mr. Richardson, Sean Pendley, planning staff, that is a great question because Karen did have that write-up in the original staff report, if you recall. So this is one of the golden criteria that we look at for whether or not the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And as Karen mentioned, the reason why we found that it was consistent was because they are keeping it RUR zoning and it is a permitted use with a conditional use permit. It is still rural zoning. So although it is a use that requires a CUP, they're maintaining that RUR zoning and this is one of those uses that can fit in with that character of rural areas. You're right, if there was ever a request to rezone this to commercial, then you could definitely make an argument that it's not consistent because you're changing the zoning, because it could then go to any kind of permitted use that would allow it to be commercial. Then that's the real concern here. So because they're keeping an RUR with these permitted uses and with the stipulations, that I think is why they find it consistent.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Would the applicant like to say anything? Please.
Peter King, one eight seven seven zero Ridgeview Road.
Can you keep that microphone up a little bit for you there?
Thanks. First off, I wanted to thank the board and, and all the neighbors. I agree with Ken that this is, I think, a prime example of everybody working together and finding a solution. The only things I think that on here that we kind of, the neighbors and I agreed on is ten years is too much. And for me, I think three years is just too little, so maybe, you know, meet somewhere in the middle at five year. And then the other thing is, is the burning. I just wanted, it sounds like it's going to be, you know, difficult to be able to burn there, but I just wanted to make note that it's not, like, I understand the, the KAR twenty-eight nineteen six forty-five, the open burning prohibited. Like if we were like a tree company or something, that's all we did was go out and cut trees and bring them back and we were burning, you know, two, you know, every other day throughout the whole year, I'd understand something like this, but to give you an example, like we would be burning like maybe once or twice a year. Like it'll be stuff like where we, a mowing crew, there's a limb in the yard and they pick it up and so that's the only thing that I wanted to address as far as the burning. Like it's not like we're going to, if I'm even going to try and get that exemption. But I think, you know, meeting with the neighbors and talking with them and I think we've worked everything out to where everybody's happy and look forward to continue the process and thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments for the applicant? All right, they, thank you so much. Anyone here to speak for public comment?
Yes, Charles Morse.
Perfect.
All right, Charles Morse, one eight four six zero, South Ridge, Geolath, Kansas. And I'm speaking for the other two neighbors who were here at the January meeting. So at that meeting, I had some slides and, you know, we, I think we hadn't met Mr. King yet, we really weren't sure what was being proposed. There was an existing landscaping business there and we were concerned at the adjacent, adjacent property and we were concerned that this was going to become a, you know, a kind of a commercial road. And so our interest, and this is why I've tried to bring this map up again here, but is essentially kind of protecting the rural character of, of this corridor along Ridgeview. So, and I had a slide last time that showed that from roughly one hundred and eighty-first street where Sycamore Springs is down to one ninety-first, this is one of the, I call it the highest density of large lot rural residential properties kind of anywhere in the area. There's, there's over eighty properties that all have one thing in common, which is a lot size of one to ten acres each. Couple of years ago, I subdivided my property and we're building a second home, a new house. So we're not moving anywhere and I think everyone's, you know, interest is generally protecting our quality of life, protecting the character of the area. And so we're really grateful with the outcome of last meeting and tonight. So it was, it was a good opportunity, you guys sent us back to, to meet with Mr. King and we did that at the Sutton's house, which is the property to the south of this, this property. And we, you know, discussed everything, discussed their concerns, you know, specific to the neighbors that were adjacent. I'm not adjacent, my concern was more about the bigger picture of will Spring Hill come along later and say, to the, to the question about rezoning that, hey, there's already commercial here, you know, we, we should go ahead and put, you know, some commercial zoning. And Spring Hill is very fast and loose with their comp plan. I know their comp plan shows this area as rural. They tried to put duplexes next to me on the eighty acres a couple of years ago and that land is for sale again and, you know, they'll probably be trying to do it again. But all the stipulations were met. I think, you know, we could support a five-year conditional use permit term if, if, if that's on the table. And just, just really grateful that everything that, that we wanted to see in there is in there and, and I also applaud Mr. King for trying to follow the process and to deal with us. You know, we had our pitchforks out last time and so, and now after this, I definitely owe you a beer. So appreciate your open-minded to it. And, and there's, there are other people who, you know, they don't follow the process and, and, and then we kind of live with the consequences. The other element here is, I think it's just human nature, which is who was here first, you know? And, you know, all of us, the landscaping business next to you, which is now moving, they were there first and so we tolerated that, you know, and because we knew it was there when we moved in. And so now you're the low man in the totem pole coming in, you know, trying to do it, but as it happens, that business is moving, his business is smaller scale, less impactful. And, you know, with the characterization as a small family-run business, I don't think that, that it sets a bad precedent at all and I think it is consistent. What can I say? I'll, I'll, I'll close with this, but I thank you guys very much for listening to us and the staff, same way. You guys have all been very accommodating, really appreciate the, the thought you guys put into it, the, the questions and, you know, the, the concern. And I think, you know, as, as unincorporated residents, it's kind of a challenge because, you know, we occupy thirty-five percent of the county and we're only one and a half percent of the population. And, and I, it kind of reminds me of when the country was founded, that's why we have two houses of Congress, because the Senate provides the equal representation for those of us in the lower, lower or less populated states. In the county, we don't really have that, so it's hard sometimes for our voice to be heard when there's this continuous march for, you know, residential development or commercial development. And so we, we appreciate that and I think you guys can relate to, you know, our desire to try to protect our quality of life. That doesn't mean that change won't happen, change is inevitable. I'm a lifelong county resident, I went to Shawnee Mission North and when that school was built in nineteen twenty-two, it was called Shawnee Mission Rural High School. And I've seen a picture of it before in downtown Mission, which we call Old Mission, it was nothing but farm fields and hay bales. And, you know, so that was Shawnee Mission Rural. We live in a rural area today, will it be that way forever? No, it, it won't, but it comes down to a question of compatible development and setting good precedents. So appreciate you all listening and we welcome Mr. King and his business into the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Anyone else have any public comments or opinion on Zoomer in person?
No, that's it.
All right, we'll go ahead and close the public comment.
I just, may I, may I ask the gentleman that just spoke, I do have a question for you. I'll let you get back up there. This is Rod Richardson. I want to make sure I understood you correctly. You, the applicant has suggested that he would be more comfortable with a five-year conditional use permit than a three and you indicated five would be okay. Did I understand you correctly?
Yep. Yep. And, and I liked what you guys said last time, which is, you know, so often it seems like a ten-year is, it, it's up to ten years and you guys had commented that a lot of times he's come through with just ten years attached. And so I, I think, yeah, five, five years would be acceptable. And, and I think after that, if he meets all the criteria and is being a good steward and a good neighbor, then, I mean, I think after that, we could support ten-year.
And I would agree with you. I, I'm viscerally opposed to just automatically putting ten years on it. That's whatever the time limit on these should be, should be something discussed and considered, given the nature of the use and concerns by adjoining property owners, because you put too long of a term on it, it takes the control away from you as to whether your controls and trying to mitigate any potential problems are even useful. So my second question is, the applicant has indicated that, if I understood him correctly, that, you know, gee, I, I'm, I understand the no-burning rule, but a few times a year I would like to burn a small amount of things. I'm not going to ask because this may not have been discussed with your group, so I'm just asking you personally, if, if a stipulation were revised to permit him, for example, to, to do exterior burning, say, once a quarter, do you think you're, would you be opposed to that or would you prefer that we stick with no burning whatsoever?
No, I, I think we could support that for two reasons. One is that the existing landscaping business has been doing that for many years and it's, it's not an issue. And secondly, I personally probably burn more often than that and, and I don't have a business just from clearing around my property and picking up. So we wouldn't have an issue with that.
So if, if, if it was proposed to allow him to conduct exterior burning, say, once per quarter, you would be all right with that?
Yep. Yep, I think that's reasonable.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I would just add, subject to all the burn permits and.
Yeah, subject to getting a burn permit and the KAR regs, whatever that application would be.
Hey, Fred Winger, Rod, to clarify, I think the applicant said they wanted a ten-year and you said five-year, just to clarify.
Right. I believe that. The proposal, the proposal was for three years, he suggested five years, so my, my recommendation were I to make one would be for five years, it appears, that's agreeable with them.
And my, this is Ken, clinging to my comments were surfaced on the like sort of auto-renewal is three years really isn't that long, but that's why I was kind of looking for that auto-renewal to kind of get us to that five-year, so I, I would be supportive of a five-year as well. Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public comment section. Discussion among the board that we've kind of already initiated, any other comments?
Kelly Rast, the only thing I would say is I think this was an amazing job and I'd like to make sure that when it gets elevated to the B O C C, they understand that the five-year term was negotiated, agreed upon across the board and, you know, it, what took place here needs to be elevated to the next level of understanding.
And this, Ken, I think that the board needs to recognize the, the work that staff and the neighbors and the applicant, I, I think this is a good example of how it should be done.
And Rod Richardson and I'd endorse the chairman and member Kelly Rast's comment. And I think it's important because in other applications we have where there is intense commentary, both pro and con from the neighbors and the applicants on, on other applications, I think it underscores the value of essentially putting a hold on things until everybody has a chance to get the facts, sit down and discuss what might be possible. A lot of times you can't resolve everything, but you might resolve ninety percent of the things and maybe the board can resolve the other ten percent to try to go from, you know, hell no to well, maybe to yeah, it looks pretty good. So I, I want to be, you know, underscore what my other members up here have said. I think the Board of County Commissioners needs to understand that, you know, this board may take it upon itself to continue these matters from time to time to allow these kind of discussions to take place and I think certainly observe whether the parties are really willing to work together or not. I think this is a classic example of how that turns out to be a pretty good move. And I think it's something particularly out here, as, as gentlemen pointed out, it is a rural area and it's a little bit different than Seventy-Fifth and Metcalf. So people need to try to work together a little bit more to get these resolved, particularly on these conditional use permits. And I would underscore that in particular, but that's really my comment, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Do we have a recommendation for the county commissioners?
This is Kelly Rast, I'll propose a motion, see if I can get it right. I move that the East Consolidated Zoning Board recommend approval of the conditional use permit request to allow a lawn and landscape contractor business with the term changed from three years to five years and for the reasons subject to stipulations indicated in staff's February twenty-eighth memo, plus the added stipulation that burning would be allowed on a quarterly basis.
Second.
All in, any additional discussion? Um, all in any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Dan, you there?
Yeah, aye.
Okay, that was uh unanimous and will this goes well April fourth, Karen?
Correct. This will go to the Board of County Commissioners. April fourth um at. Uh, one eleven South Cherry Street, which is this room. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, the final application before us this evening is application number two E two four three seven three P P F P S H. Um, and Diane will be presenting.
Good evening again. Uh, Diane Wicklin, Planning Department. Uh, so the applicant uh for this one is again uh Paint and Brockway Engineering. Uh, the landowner is uh, uh, Aladia LLC. Um, and. The mi- members of that are Ryan and Cindy Schmitz. So the, the location is uh. Of the property is about one quarter mile south of Two Hundred and Seventh Street on the west side of Renter Road. Um, as you can see here on the, on the vicinity map. Um, the applicant does propose plating this forty acres into three residential lots. Um, to be known as Aladia Estates. Um, each of the three lots are, are about twelve point eight uh net acres in size. Um, and all proposed lots will have frontage and direct access onto Renter Road. And all three lots uh do comply with the minimum street frontage requirements. Um, in accordance with the Carnet Plan, which is that uh comprehensive arterial, arterial road network plan. And no new streets are proposed with this application. So uh, we did review a minimum infrastructure requirements um as usual. Uh, for the rural zoning district. Um, and just a quick update on the site distance study. Um, and you. Probably noticed a stipulation on this, but uh the applicant did uh submit a revised site distance study. Um, and that was reviewed and accepted by, by Public Works. Um, and um, um, well, one of the county engineers from, from Public Works is, is here tonight in case of questions. Um, so, so that uh stipulation now has been satisfied and, and completed. Um, and that just states that there's a, an area for each lot where um they can put a driveway and that it does meet uh side distance requirements. And then just also to note that the property is served by Miami Rural Water District Two. And they'll provide a water service to each of those proposed lots. And uh, so the proposed plat does meet all, all of the applicable uh minimum infrastructure requirements. And then um just also to note uh, in, in regard to the comprehensive plan, um the subject property. Uh, uh, is, indicates it to be in the rural policy area of uh for the comprehensive plan. Uh, which has a uh density of one dwelling unit for ten acres. And so this proposed density of the plat of three lots on forty acres. Uh, definitely is in keeping with that future land use and that uh density recommendation. And so the plat is in keeping with the comprehensive plan. Um, and so just to kind of go through a couple of the graphics here, so this is just an aerial view of the subject property, kind of a zoom-in. Uh, view of the property. And then this is an aerial view just of the surrounding area. The subject property is outlined in blue. And then here's a copy of the uh preliminary plat. And then this is a copy of the final plat, just showing the, the three lots in um. Kind of the area that you see crossing through all of those lots is, is the stream buffer zone. Um. So uh with that, you'll also see in the back of the packet is a, a memo from the Public Works Department. And then also memo from, from the Building Codes Department. Um, and so with that, staff is recommending approval of the uh preliminary and final plat. For three lots uh for Aladia Estates. Um, subject to the stipulations on uh page seven and eight of the staff report. Um, and just with one uh staff proposed uh revision, which is uh on your screen, and that's just to amend. The language on stipulation number ten uh and just to. Just trying to clarify that um a floodplain permit is only required if there is some work uh done in the floodplain area. And, and then also there's a revised motion here uh when the board is ready for that. So with that. I'm here for questions and the uh applicant's engineer is also here.
Thank you. I appreciate the report, Diane. Uh, question for you. When you're talking about the site distance study. Is that site distance for each of the three lots to have its own? Um driveway or is that related to the shared driveway that's kind of, I think, referenced on point eight or nine?
Um, so uh this Diane Wicklin Planning Department, so there are no proposed uh shared, shared driveway entrances as part of the plat. Um, I, I think I know what you're referring to maybe is on.
Page eight, item eight.
Um, yeah, and so I think that um that stipulation, um I think that was just a note. Um, saying that if shared entrances um. Were proposed that. That we, you know, that those are, are now required to be uh constructed before the final plat. Um, but that is, is not applicable um because uh that, yeah, there are no shared entrances with this, with this plat.
And so the site distance is for each one to have its own driveway?
Yeah, yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you so much. Any other uh questions of staff by the board?
Mr. Chairman Rod Richardson. I'm. Kind of curious with reference to the area that's indicated traversing across the three lots. Is that a, is that designating floodplain or is that a floodway or what exactly is that for sure?
Um, so I can start to answer that and then if you want more detail, the. Maybe the engineer can, can add to that. So that. I think what you're referring to is, is this kind of area here that's crossing all of the lots. That is actually the stream, stream buffer zone. Um, that is not floodplain. There is a. Tiny bit of floodplain area kind of down here that um I believe kind of crosses the street, but this is. Uh, is not floodplain area. It is just a, a required stream buffer zone. And it's part of federal requirements now.
So the, explain when you say a buffer zone, that precludes them from doing what in that buffer zone?
Um, so I believe in that stream buffer zone ba- basically. Uh, there's really no activity, no land disturbance, uh. No driveways, really no activity at all within that stream buffer zone.
Last question would be. The reason I ask is that I, I have no idea where they'll set. The foundations for this house, but I was curious as to whether. This presented a potential. Flood threat and therefore a limitation of where the, you know, for example, the lowest opening in that house foundation could be. Like you would have with a flood, an actual floodway or floodplain. So I gather that's not an issue here.
I, I do, I, no, I don't believe it would be, no.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you, Diane. Uh, applicant, if you'd like to say a few words?
Todd Allen Brand, Paint and Brockway, four twenty-six South Kansas Avenue. Uh, I'm here with the property owners, Ryan and Cindy Schmidt. And we are in agreement with the staff report as well as the adjustment that was made on the stipulation. Um, and we just look forward to proceeding to the next process and I appreciate you, Mr. Chairman and Board. Taking the opportunity to review the case. And we're here to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Any questions, the applicant? All right, hearing none, thank you. Uh, any public comment?
No.
All right, we'll go ahead and open and close the public comments with, on no one having any. And um thoughts, discussion? Anyone? Fred, Ken, comments?
No.
Good?
None.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if there's no comments, uh then I would move that the board approve application number E twenty-four dash three seventy-three dash P P. Slash F P S P. For a preliminary and final plat for three residential lots, be known, to be known as. Hope I pronounce this correctly, Aladia Estates. For the reasons and stipulations recommended by staff and set forth in the staff report with a revision to stipulation number ten as noted by staff.
Do I have a second?
Ken Sanders, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, uh unanimously pass. I believe this will also go on April.
Uh, y- yes, this item will go also to the Board, Board of County Commissioners on uh April fourth, nine thirty a.m. here in this room.
All right, great. That closes that application. Um, and before, off the record, where, where'd the name come from?
Yeah.
Oh, nice.
So it's Alidia. Aladia.
Aladia.
Okay. Cool, very nice.
Uh, any other business before the board?
Mr. Chairman, uh Fred Winger, I know tomorrow we have a near and dear project that's going in front of the Board of. County Commissioners since we've been dealing with the soccer complex, so. I, I was looking at the agenda and. It, it looks like there's. Two suggested motions. Is that, is that right? I was looking at the agenda and there's a motion one, A and B. And one says per zoning board recommendations and the other says with changes. Can you clarify?
Sean Pendley, County Planning Staff. So for the Metcalf Soccer C U P application, um Michelle Lineiger was the planner. She drafted the briefing sheet and I think what was presented to the board in that briefing sheet does outline the. Stipulations as recommended by the zoning board. And then uh at the agenda review meeting last week by the board, I think the board had requested if there were changes made. Uh, what kind of options would there be, something to that effect? So just like with, with other applications, if the board is indicated that. They would consider any alternatives. They ask usually what those alternatives are and it's usually based on what an applicant's requesting. So if I recall, I don't have that before me right now, but you know, if, if a board member is asking for. What would the alternatives be if requested by the applicant? That may be what those options are. But of course, you know, the board will have the discussion and they will. M- make the motion for whatever they recommend is appropriate. But again, it's, it's outlined as uh provided and the resolution that's included that's attached is the resolution with the stipulations as recommended by.
Right, yeah, I see, I see those from our January thirty-first meeting, okay.
A question then, just procedurally, if the, we made specific recommendations that was remanded to us. We then approved it unanimously, if I recall correctly, subject to various stipulations. So if they impose new stipulations that we did not consider. I assume those would simply never receive any public hearing because. They were never before us. Am I correct about that?
Well, I do know that the public hearing has concluded for that application. That happens at the zoning board, so the public hearing is done. So when the Board of County Commissioners hear the item, there is technically no uh public hearing. It is a public meeting. Uh, but no, it does not require then a new public hearing for any changes made by the board. They could simply do it, since it's been remanded. Uh, and reconsidered. When it returns then on second review, it can be changed with anything without any effective public hearing. The public, anyone that, that wants to sign up may speak. At the meeting with the Board of County Commissioners, but it's not, but would not require a new public hearing.
And my next question is. Following our vote to send that up. To the B O C C. Has the. Applicant had any contact with the Board of County Commissioners regarding what they want it to do with reference to our stipulation?
Uh, not to my knowledge, no. I'm not aware of the applicant making contact with any of the board. Uh, and they also did not attend the agenda review meeting either. But, you know, the applicant notified staff about what they uh would request. Uh, but there's been, to my knowledge, no meeting with the board uh by the applicant.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I just personally would. Assume they would have to declare that if they had any contact whatsoever from the applicant requesting. Uh, either approval or disapproval or whatever. So. It will be interesting to see what they do tomorrow.
Yes, yeah, certainly we, we expect some discussion, a lot of the discussion, yes.
I think at the uh, at the, at the meeting we had the other night with you folks and, which I thought, by the way, was well done and, and was well worth attending. You know, I think. Least. There were some significant points made with the Board of County Commissioners there about concerns that. I have and I'm sure shared by these other board members. That um, it's a little disconcerting when you hear them, some of the Board of County Commissioners, say things like. Well, the professional staff and I endorsed you the other night. You guys are great. Uh, that we have a staff, so that's good enough for me in essence. Uh, that concerns me because. We spend a lot of time here with you guys. You do a lot of work on this. The applicant comes in and does a lot of work. And uh, yet when it gets to the B O C C, there's virtually no discussion. The agenda review doesn't allow any public comments, so it's really not a public hearing. So when it gets up to them to make the decision, and it's their call, I understand that. Um, under the statutes, but um it is a little disconcerting. For example, uh to, to hear it simply sort of rubber strand, rubber stamped on through and, and that's the way it appears. Maybe that's not the way they intend it. The other thing that I mentioned the other night that I thought was, you know, I'd certainly like to see this followed through. I don't know what our. Peg Trent will do with it. But I strongly tried to suggest that anytime they remand something to us. I hope they would say. Uh, you know, we object to, or we have concerns about your findings, number one, two and three. We want you to specifically review those because we think. Uh, for the following reasons, they ought to have a longer term. We think for the following reasons, the lighting is okay, or whatever the case may be in whatever application. Because when they just simply say reconsider this, we've already re, we've already considered it for. Two or three hours here. And I know you can't. I'm just saying this on the record in the remote chance they read it. But I do think that's important and I would hope that maybe we'll never get another remand. That's fine, but if we do. Um, I want to see some very specific rationale for. So we conducted the public hearing, we did all the things we need to do, and now you want to go a different direction, you're remanding it. That's fine. Why? And it's the why that's missing, in my opinion. Um, so anyway, that's my thought.
This is Kelly Rast. I have, but one of the things that could be the difference too with the changes is that. If we say, because I think one of the things with the soccer complex was that, that they go through a um. Dark sky pop policy. So, but afterwards, after. We leave, this applicant can come to you guys and say, well, we really don't want to do that and that can be part of. The record with moving forward and then be shared with the B O C C that even though the zoning board. Recommended these stipulations, the applicant. Disagrees with them. But is that correct?
Certainly, yes. And in that case, yes, uh, the applicant did indicate that they uh did not agree with three out of the four stipulations as, as recommended by the zoning board. They did agree to the additional landscaping. Uh, but they would not agree with the other stipulations. So that's what, what we do notify the board is that that, that's the applicant has told us. And they can present that at the meeting and they can discuss that, but that's correct. That's probably why some of the board members ask, well, what would the alternatives be? If they got what they wanted and so then they'll have to decide and discuss that tomorrow as to what they would recommend.
I think that's why it's so important that staff. And the process, the, the collaborative process of staff. Zoning board members, citizens, application, the collaborative part gets a little bit more discussion or gets a little bit more emphasis. And that's what I think is lacking when you watch these B O C C. Meetings is they seem to make a, or have opinions on a whim and you're sitting there going. You clearly realize they didn't know. you clearly realize they didn't know about any of the collaborative efforts that went in to get to a certain, you know, negotiated point or something. So, so I agree with like what Rod says as well.
Especially on your point of the lighting such a huge topic. And you know, if the applicant wants it one way and we've done the other, I think the board really needs to recognize, you know, we made concessions on that when really none of us want the lighting or we, many of us don't want the lighting at all, but we've made a compromise. So for them to take that and kind of run opposite with it.
Yeah, just because they don't want it.
Yeah. So.
This is Fred Winger again. So with, of the two motions, one says approval with board recommendations and the other says approval with CUP stipulations. Which one of those is, includes the revised six, eighteen, and nineteen, that was the indoor, well, that's closed at eight p.m., the dark sky point and the evergreen point. I mean, which of these two actually included what we wanted? Is it the first one or the second?
I don't have the briefing sheet in front of me, but if I recall, what's listed first is the recommended approval with the stipulations as recommended by the zoning board and then option B or option two, whatever it is, is an alternate option with changes, any changes to the stipulation. So really, it's, we can't, you know, staff doesn't do any business as far as making, you know, here's, go, go change this or this arbitrarily. It's, we present what the zoning board recommended. And then if requested, if there's a comment or a question, either whether it be from the applicant or the zoning board for any changes, the alternate option then, because we give the board options, they have, they've always been presented with options. Approve as recommended by the zoning board, approve with changes, or deny it. So the second option, whatever that is, is would be to approve with any changes to the stipulations. I don't know what those changes would be, but the board can, will certainly have that discussion and then they can make the decision for what they would.
I think that's what's hard is they miss the backstory to get to their.
Well, again, I, you know, I can't get into all the details, but they, the, the board is provided with all of the record. They receive all of the public record. They get the minutes, the presentations, they get the information, all the public comments. And in the briefing sheet, we do know that there were changes made by the zoning board. We can't rehash the entire public hearing. We do provide them with that information.
I agree, Keller asks, but I, you know, again, this is where I took fault with the one comment, unfortunately, that when you were up there, if the answer, like when I talk to Jay and he tells me, "Well, it's in the, in the, it's in their, the minutes that they get and all that." If they ask you a specific question, that's also, the answer's already in the minutes, then the minimum that staff needs to do is provide both sides of that question, not just one side. And that's what is seen, or that's the part that's missing, in my opinion, when I'm watching this. But the other thing is, again, this is where I feel like, you know, everything Peg was saying at our development meeting or whatever, I didn't disagree with any of it. I just feel like that's in theory, but in reality, things don't add up in the same way. Even talking about the quality of life, the reason we put those stipulations on the baseball thing was to give some of the residents a better quality of life in the evening when they want to be outside. And yet, it just seems like the whole quality of life of the citizens and the residents gets completely tossed when this stuff is in front of them. And the same thing's going to happen with the soccer park, even though, I mean, I don't know how almost every single paragraph that was presented to us at that, you know, at the meeting, the whole gist of everything comes to quality of life of residents and makes it sound like the residents are the key component. They, they hold the power. Their quality of life is important, but none of that's conveyed, you know, or it just gets tossed. And yet here, this is what we're trying to thread that needle. And like I said, when they ask you a question or ask staff a question, the quality of life or the backing up of why something was done, where's that quality of life when we really need it at the, at that moment? We don't need it at a, at a meeting. We need it at the times that it's really important. So it's either we stand behind that the quality of life means something for these residents or just, let's just take it out of the comprehensive plan that's listed in every single paragraph. Because that's where, that's where I had a problem with what Peg was saying. Like, I agree with everything you're saying, but in reality, this is not holding up when this stuff comes in front. And nobody seems to be pushing that or supporting that, even though it seems to be our baseline for everything.
And Rod Richardson, again, this is, I think, a generic discussion that's going to come up again, so it's good to have it. And certainly we had a unanimous decision last time. But I want to emphasize something I mentioned before. It is a concern to me and it's something that you as planners would have to decide and it's your call, not mine. But, you know, I'm looking at this and we have this generically, we've got the Stillwell Community Plan, you've got the Blue Valley Plan, you've got all these plans floating out there that are guidelines, not mandatory rules, but there is a provision where you say generally, "This is consistent with the comprehensive plan or not consistent." I have a real problem seeing that any conditional use permit, including, pick one, is consistent with the comprehensive plan if it is not otherwise permitted in that area. So somebody somewhere made a decision that "We're not going to let these in this area. We're not going to do that." It's, you know, unless you get a conditional use permit. In the case of the Stillwell Plan, for example, where it says lighting should be limited to eighteen feet. Clearly, when an application, a conditional use permit comes in and says, "We want seventy-foot lighting poles," it is not consistent with the comprehensive plan. And it seems to me that could miscommunicate to the Board of County Commissioners that, "Well, it's okay. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan." It may take some explanation at that point when you say, "Well, it isn't technically consistent, but if this is granted," you know, I understand that, but I do think, I would ask that you at least give some consideration on conditional use permits to say, "No, this isn't authorized under this, under our comp plan. It is inconsistent with what's there. It is inconsistent with the Stillwell Plan. It is inconsistent in all these ways." And point out where it's inconsistent with it. And then we can get to the point of, "Okay, that's why it's conditional use permit. Let's see if we can figure out ways to mitigate those inconsistencies and make it okay for this applicant." So enough of that. Last point. Who's presenting this to the B O C C tomorrow?
One point about conditional use permits. The, the idea behind a conditional use permit isn't, it's inconsistent with the zoning district. It's, it might be. So just to say out of hand it's inconsistent, that's really not the way the CUP is constructed. It's, it can be depending on the context that it's in and depending on how it's stipulated. I mean, just like the King CUP we just looked at, you know, it's such a balancing act with the CUP. So, I mean, it was just, it's a minor kind of wordsmithing thing, but that's kind of the approach.
And, and just building on what you just said, I think that deserves, that very point you just made deserves particular comment when you are at the point of saying whether this does or doesn't, isn't, is or is not consistent with the comp plan. For example, even if you said, "Well, you know, technical point, but these are the plans that apply here and here is where this use, if approved as proposed, is inconsistent with it." And I think that would be very helpful to us and the Board of County Commissioners, particularly when we're saying, "Whoa, we've all agreed to adopt this plan where Stillwell lighting is a factor and clearly this isn't consistent with it." Now, they've proposed some lighting that, you know, may pass muster, may not, but I just think, and I'm not talking about that one particular, but any conditional use permit, I think I would like to see a comment that this is generally consistent with our view of what the comp plan is with the following exceptions, where it clearly is not consistent with it. And then let us decide whether that's important enough to make a difference. Because I think that is significant because otherwise, why have a comp plan at all if they're proposing? This one wouldn't come up in rezonings, I don't believe, but particularly, but in a, in a CUP, I think it does. And I think that's where we run afoul of this because we have people out here saying, "How could you do this? It's not consistent with the plan for dark lighting, et cetera." So we have to kind of go around and try to figure out how to make that work with dark lighting conditions and all that. Anyway, just something to think about. My last question is, who's presenting this tomorrow? Are you?
Sean Pennley, Planning Staff. The, the planner who will be presenting this is Michelle Lineiger.
Okay.
But you know, I'll be there along for, with Michelle for any questions, but the planner who presents it will be.
Would it, do you believe it would be appropriate or inappropriate for you to say that I would remind the county commissioners or I would, on behalf of the East Consolidated Zoning Board, you know, they made a comment at the meeting last night that they are, you know, they are very concerned about the integrity of their recommendations. Maybe that's the wrong word, but we're very concerned about the recommendation we've made and trust that you will give them every consideration. I'm just asking, maybe that's inappropriate.
I don't know if I would be comfortable with that. We, you know, we have an agenda review meeting the week before. We, we've already presented this to the board. The way the board is running the meetings is a little bit different than that way they have in the past. Staff, again, we present to them exactly what was recommended by the zoning board. We emphasize that. I understand that there's a concern that, you know, we, we could go on for another hour talking about this. Staff absolutely does let them know when there are concerns and the zoning board has recommendations. That's why we give them the resolution with the recommended stipulations from the zoning board. I don't think it would be appropriate for us to go to the chairman because what, what the chairman's going to ask tomorrow of Michelle, "Michelle, are there any updates from the meeting last week at the agenda review when you presented this?" She is going to provide an update. Because the update is, you know, that the applicant has, they've agreed to a stipulation. They have concerns about the others. That's what we'll present. But again, we, Michelle did make the point that the zoning board did have concerns about this. The neighbors had concerns, so we certainly make that clear to the board, so.
And certainly when she, I think she can certainly submit, but remind the council or the board this was a seven oh recommendation.
Yes, yes. And that is notable, you know, with the changes that were made here on this, that particular application. Initially, it was a recommendation for denial. When it was remanded and reconsidered, it was recommended for approval with revised stipulations. And that's clearly something we emphasize. Yeah.
Thank you.
Is that meeting broadcast too on the county's website?
Yes, that'll be on the, on, or online. It'll be streamed online, yes.
How far down on the agenda is it?
I think it's the first item on that. Yeah.
This is Dan Foyle.
Dan's on that.
Yeah.
Sorry, I, I just kind of added my, I don't know if it's even worth two cents, but I went back and watched, you know, the, the last county commissioners meeting with that. I wouldn't say there was what was misrepresented, but to me, it was obvious that they didn't get the sentiment behind some of our recommendations. One, they kept saying, "Oh, this is less impactful," was one of the things I heard so many times. And it's not less impactful in any way or form than what is, would normally be there as far as hours and, and that kind of thing, especially when you take the lighting into it. I have a question is, so there's two options being presented. Are both of those options being recommended for approval by staff? So if they, option one is number two, recommended approval also?
This is Sean Pennley, Planning Staff. So there are two options. One is the recommendation as recommended by the zoning board. The other option is recommend approval with changes as noted by the B O C C. So their, their options are, the first two options really given to them is one, approve it as recommended by the zoning board, or two, approve with any changes to the CUP.
Okay, and like in everything, we get there's a staff recommends approval. Is, do both of those have staff recommends approval tied to them?
We don't, we don't provide a second recommendation. You know, staff had already recommended approval as stipulated with the previous application when it, when this came before the zoning board. Then the zoning board made changes. So they really don't, they don't look at that as like three options. They just, they, they understand that at this point, it's either approve as recommended by the zoning board or approve with the changes that they want. They may ask staff's opinion of something, but it's not, we don't present them with another third option from staff recommendations.
Has, has the county commissioners been filled in on the history of the bores and with the abandonment of the property on one hundred and eighty-third street when their kids got tired of riding horses and the fire and all that stuff? And, you know, they kind of have a history of going and doing these things. There's still the big white tent that doesn't really, you can't see it from the road. Oh, you can see it from the road, but it kind of stands out. But, you know, that was a big concern of everyone that has kind of brought it up to me is that they have a history of doing something and then, you know, like, okay, so now their kids get tired of soccer. Then what? They've already said on record that it's not a moneymaker for them. Now what are we going to do with that building and all that stuff? But I don't know if that's something that has been brought up or not.
Yeah, this is Sean Pennley, Planning Staff. I'm not aware of any of that other information that's not relevant to this application. All that's been presented to the board is what was presented as part of their proposal for the CUP. Okay, thanks, Sean. Thanks, everybody.
This is Fred Winger. Does the applicant get to re-present tomorrow?
An applicant is always allowed to speak. The applicant does not have a presentation tomorrow, but if they have any, if the board has any questions, the applicant can speak.
And is the public allowed to speak at a meeting?
Whoever signs up may speak at the meeting.
Okay.
We don't, those are not live streamed. Kelly Rass, those are the, the public comments is what are no longer live streamed.
Anyone who signs up to speak on an application on the agenda may speak at the time of that action, so that will be on the meeting. It will be streamed as part of that application.
Oh, well, it's not at the beginning.
If somebody's.
Part of the application.
If someone's, general public comment periods are separate.
Okay.
If anybody's signing up to speak on that particular item, they're considered and heard along with everyone else at the time of that application.
Okay, great. I have one more question, though. Kind of what, what Dan had said, because I've noticed this too, sometimes the county commissioner will say something that's not exactly accurate, like what Dan just referenced, saying that this is less intensive. Is it within staff's purview at that time to kind of clarify that comment? And say, "Well, technically in Stillwell, this would be considered the largest building, the only one with lights over eighteen feet." Yeah, like, why, why is it, why is it allowed to hear them say stuff that's actually false when you're presenting an application or when there's something being presented in front of them? And they're literally saying something that's not really true and there's no correction? Because they kept saying that about the baseball, one, a comment about the baseballs as well. And it's like, that just, that's just not true, but nobody was clarifying that.
I can't, we're, there are many questions here, which I believe go far beyond anything that was even, this is not even on the agenda. I'm not aware of it. Staff doesn't correct anybody who speaks. We respond to questions. I, beyond that, it sounds like this is probably better for a subject for another meeting. We, it sounds like it could be some additional training, message, additional information. You know, beyond that, I can't really speak to any other particulars on the case. It's really not.
Trust the system.
Yeah.
Well.
I would love for the B O C C to talk next time, somebody, and continue what we built on where everybody, up to the point of B O C C, everybody talked how things worked and then we stopped with them. I would love for that, one of them to get up and talk and then we could have asked them these questions. So, and I brought that up to Peg for next, or Jay maybe, or whoever. Next time, can one of them be up there and tell us how things work? Tell us how your agenda review is? What do you look at with our stuff? When you see some, you know, that would be great.
Is it appropriate for anyone on the board to actually speak? Or would that be more public versus?
I will see, I think Ryan Hager, our legal staff, is on, or he was going to be on. Ryan, could you speak to that?
Unfortunately, I, I cannot. I do not know the answer to that question. I don't know if it would be inappropriate or appropriate regarding that. I mean, as has been said numerous times tonight, the, the transcripts of these hearings are provided to the, to the, to the board members and they have their own individual processes of taking in that information. I, I don't know whether it would be appropriate or inappropriate for a board member of the zoning board to go speak to B O C C. But you are a citizen, so maybe you can roll in at the, at the top of it and do your citizen. But I, I just do not know. And I don't know whether that would be a good idea or a bad idea.
I would be concerned that it would create a conflict of interest, concern. I don't know the answer to that either, but I would be, just Rod Richardson. I, but that certainly crossed my mind, but I think, I think, I think that probably, you know, my guess is if legal counsel will find on that, ultimately, after looking at it, researching, it'd probably be, you know, if you're that close to it as a board member, you need to recuse yourself and show up as an opponent in the audience and put your comments on public record.
I would agree. That sounds like a, a. Uh, I would agree, that sounds like a, a, uh, uh, I will make this clear, I do not recommend that anyone here show up at tomorrow's uh, a board meeting, uh, uh. I, I don't know whether that would be, uh, where, where that would land ethically speaking, or in terms of uh, uh, conflict of interest. I do not know, but I would say I would not recommend it, though of course I don't have the ability to physically control you, to, to control whether you, uh, you know, show up or not, but I would not recommend it.
It's enough that, that they will know we're all watching uh, intently. And that the staff knows we're all watching intently, and I think the only point here is. There are a lot of people out here, both pro and con to any of these applications that are very concerned about having spent their time and effort in these meetings. And I think there is some concern that, um, and there's a reason for that concern, that the B O C C isn't really paying close enough attention. To the issues that are stated here. But um, you know, that's reflects the, their remand of saying, well, we have some concerns about this. That's why I say, if they're going to remand it because they disagree with it, that's perfectly wonderful, but we need to know why they're doing it.
I will, Mr. Chairman, I will say this, Sean Penley. So, following the agenda review meeting, we were requested by three of the commissioners to meet with them individually, to discuss and answer questions for them. I will tell you that two of them told me, I did watch the meetings, I did read the minutes, I did read the public comments. They did, and they understand this issue, so they are well aware of the concerns of that particular project. And they did point out that they also, at least one of them who was at that meeting uh, last week for the training said. We appreciate the, you know, the comments that we hear from the zoning boards and, so they do listen, I can tell you. Uh, can't always say that they read everything, but they don't, they, in that particular case, they did indicate to us, they did in fact watch the meetings, so they're aware of that.
Last question for me, Rod Richardson, um, and this might go up to legal counsel in the sky here. Um, but generally, and I know this is a, that this, this is getting to some of the technical legal stuff, but. Since we're a quasi-legal, you know, organization here in terms of deciding these things. Has there ever been any discussion, and I know, I believe Olathe did this, uh, in matters I had before Olathe. Where actually um, findings of fact and conclusions of law were drawn up and submitted to the B, to the council. Because really, um. There isn't any when the B O C C approves it, other than staff comments and sort of the general record on appeal. Maybe that's enough, but I guess my question is, and you don't want to make this a court proceeding. But uh, sometimes I wonder if, if in order to figure out why the zoning board went here and the B O C C went there, somewhere there needs to be. I would think some clarity of, of, you know, findings of fact and conclusions of law, I'm pretty sure that'll fall like a dead moose on the B O C C. But I ask, I know with, when you were at Olathe, that's what they did.
I, yeah, I won't go too far into this because I can't really speak to all the details from other jurisdictions, but I do know, as an example, in Olathe, when they presented the findings of fact. Those were on cases that were uh, denied by the governing body, so once it was a denial, they had to provide the findings of fact. To the applicant, or in the event of an appeal. Uh, as a regular course of the business, I don't believe they provide findings of fact for every case to the city council.
Yeah, that's burdensome to do that, I, all right, well, thanks for that clarification. That's all I have, Mr.
Any, any other comments during our other business section of the agenda?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Hearing none, do we have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And it's unanimous, thank you.